At six thirty on September sixteenth. Excuse me. Before I move to the open session, I would like to take a few moments to recognize a person who in the last few days passed away. Mr. Paul Hale. He gave over twenty-eight years of service, wearing many different hats between nineteen ninety-six and two thousand twenty-four. Among the things that Paul did for the town, he served on the Ad Hoc Recreation Committee from two thousand two to two thousand three. He was a member of the Board of Selectmen, two thousand three to two thousand nine. Capital Improvement Planning Committee, nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven, and again, two thousand four, two thousand eight. Community Preservation Committee, two thousand seven, two thousand eight. Finance Committee from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand three. Montezuma Regional Planning Committee, two thousand three to two thousand nine. Open Space Committee, two thousand one, two thousand three. Road Advisory Committee, two thousand four to two thousand seven. Town Common Committee, two thousand three, two thousand four. Twenty Twenty Committee, two thousand five to two thousand six. Also on the Ad Hoc Senior Center Committee, two thousand eleven. The Senior Center Building Committee, of which I was a member, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. And he was the chair of that committee from two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen. The Ad Hoc, I don't think I mentioned this, Community Center Design Committee, two thousand twelve. The Ad Hoc Long Range Facilities Planning Committee from two thousand thirteen. He was chair in two thousand fifteen. Memorial Day Committee, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. And I also knew him as a bus driver for my son when he was growing up. Paul was a great help to me when I first started out on the board. He was very quiet and so forth and soft spoken, but a very, very nice man. I for one will miss him. Is there anyone who would like to say anything else besides what I just put forth? But he will be missed and we wish his family the best. So now we will move on. Is there anyone here for open session? I don't see that there is. So Katie will go through the announcements if you will.
So we have coming up is the townwide yard sale from September twenty-eighth to the twenty-ninth, both days. It's gonna run eight to three. The due date to enter is nine twenty-one, which is coming up, what, Friday, I believe.
Saturday.
Saturday, Saturday. And the way you sign up is you're going to email hubbertstonma.parks@gmail.com. Again, that's hubbertstonma.parks, plural, at gmail dot com. I believe it's free to get on the map. Yeah, it's free to get on the map. Maps will be located at the senior center. For sale the day of, the seniors will have a good yard sale going on here. So everyone, get on the map. All you gotta do is again, send the email with your address, your name, that kinda stuff. The dates are September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth from eight to three. And the due date is coming up this Saturday, nine twenty-one. Alright, so then coming up in October, we have two bigger events and one of them, we have an outreach for. So first off, we have Non-Such Night, which is going to be October twelfth. With rain date the thirteenth from four to whenever it gets done. We start out with having food, different trucks and venues, like Jacamo's. The ice cream truck was supposed to be there, but they're having electrical issues. They may not be there. But we'll have a couple others. We'll have some smores and things like that. And there'll be a band playing, Neon Alley will be playing. And that will go from about four to six thirty. And then we're gonna show a movie. Bill Shea will be out with his acto one from The Ghostbusters, because we are showing Ghostbusters, the newest one, Frozen Empire. It roughly starts at dusk, which is like six forty-five-ish, seven o'clock. And we'll have it out there on the big inflatable monstrosity that we have. Super fun times with the good speaker system. But yeah, so again, we're gonna be showing Ghostbusters, Frozen Empire. Acto one will be there. There'll be music and food available beforehand for sale. And we'll have bonfires and all kinds of good stuff again. And again, that is October twelfth from four to whateverish the movie gets done. Then, this is what we have the outreach for. We have a Taste of Hubbardston coming up. It is Wednesday this week. It's gonna be right in the middle of the week, October sixteenth from five to eight. So mark your calendars. It's gonna be at the Rod and Gun. So, we're looking for, the EDC is looking for not only businesses to come and do. We had the Taste of Hubbardston last year. We had businesses come and do food. We had them showing off their wares. Some of them were giving out freebies, business cards, things like that. Like we had, the storage unit place was giving out little like trinkets and things like that. Jacamo's came, the diner came, the Pizza Palace came. Kathy Hansgate with Ladybug Farm was there. There was a bunch of different entities in town that had wooden wares and things like that. Different small businesses that set up and were showing what they made and handing out business cards and things like that. It's a great spot to mingle and get to know your neighbors. So first off, we're asking businesses to RSVP, to join in the fun and to get your name out and stuff like that. Then we're also asking if people, residents, would like to come and enjoy the Taste of Hubbardston and get a flair for all the different businesses going on. So, this is what we need both to do. Either you're a business or you're a resident and you wanna join in. Again, it's the Taste of Hubbardston, October sixteenth from five to eight, the Rod and Gun. You're going to RSVP and you're going to send your RSVP via email to edc@hubbertstonma.us. Email. And you need to RSVP by October eleventh. So again, the email is edc@hubbertstonma.us. Okay, I think I said it slow enough, right? And again, do that by October eleventh, but the Taste of Hubbardston is October sixteenth. And we would love everyone to come and enjoy and see all the small businesses. We want all the small businesses to come. And we want everyone to intermingle, so that way we can show off what we actually have in town. Cause you'd be surprised how many people are unaware of what kinda things we got going on here in this small town.
That's a Wednesday?
Yeah, it's a Wednesday. It's right in the middle of the week. That's the normal EDC meeting, so we're just gonna, in lieu of the meeting, we're gonna have a Taste of Hubbardston.
It was a beautiful night last year.
Yeah, it was.
They had a really, really good job last year with that.
Yeah, there was a lot of, you know, people chatting and stuff like that. It was really good. It was a lot of residents asking questions and things like that. Business cards getting handed off. It was great. We had realtors, we had all kinds of people. It's good stuff.
Good luck with the future.
Thank you, Katie. Anyone else have any comments, announcements, or reports to give at this point?
Kipi, did you wanna talk about Saturday, how it went?
It went great. It was a great day. The weather was perfect. The crowd was nice. It was a success for, you know, the Lions Club and everyone who participated. It was a great time.
Good weather, that's for sure.
Yeah, couldn't have been better.
Okay, then we will move on to our first item of business. The plowing and private ways discussion. We have our DPW Director Travis Brown with us virtually. Do you wanna kick it out, Nate, and then turn it over to Travis, or just have him come right in?
Yep, so this is part of our policy review. We brought it up last week and, uh, two weeks ago. And it came to fruition that it's not that there was anything necessarily wrong with the policy. We just weren't following it. So Travis was gonna come here tonight and we're gonna talk about the policy as written. You all have a copy of the policy and the sheet where the private ways are listed. And then I have the only contract that we have for any private ways, which is between Grasshopper Yard Druings and Plum Tree Lane. So, and with that, I will let Travis take it from here.
Okay, Travis, the floor is yours.
So the, um, more or less when I took over, the town with their own trucks was plowing Streeter Road and Plum. And at that time, I asked why, even if we had approved the Mass MGL to plow private ways. I think Nate, you said that Streeter Road was approved to plow a certain date?
Streeter Road, yeah. Way back in the day when, I believe, don't quote me on this, I'd have to look it up. I wanna say two thousand and two is when the town accepted that Mass to choose as your general law in order to do this and wrote the policy. And at that time, Streeter Road was not an accepted way. So they had had a couple of years, I don't know exactly how many, but a few years, where they went through this whole process, which is a select board approval and a town meeting appropriations approval after a request from some people living on the street. And that worked successfully for them a few times. Obviously can't speak to when that stopped, cause eventually the road was taken on as a public way. And the one that we're working, that we're gonna be talking about right now is Plum Tree. It could be, it could happen to any number of roads on this list.
I can't remember the, how many years ago it was, but I'm thinking somewhere in the vicinity of maybe four, maybe five years ago, when they came before us to ask if we, if they could in fact become a roadway that they, we would take care of. So they did come before the board and the board passed that.
For Streeter?
Yeah.
For the public, public acceptance.
So they are, they are one of our roads.
Yes, yeah, they're one of the roads. They're not on the list anymore.
Right, that's why.
Yeah.
And if you look back, not only are you not following the policy and pushing for the people of private ways to fill out this form, we haven't had a contract with the vendor that's doing the private way, that the only one that is currently being done in this way for at least three years now.
Okay, so the only one on this list that currently is being plowed is Plum Tree Lane.
If I'm not mistaken, Travis?
Yes. Plum Tree Lane, it was, it was Streeter Road and Plum Tree Lane. And then once Streeter dropped off, it was just Plum Tree. And, um, not, you know, as the state's here, it's supposed to be done every three years. I personally have been here for eight years position and have not seen an updated one or even one that was signed to recruit to allocate money to plow it.
Okay, so they're the only ones that keep, that want their road plowed. The rest of them do not ask for plowing.
Or they did not know about this process.
What I'm trying to get at is that this has been going on. And I would send out letters as it stands to have them fix their roads prior to. And if they didn't, we wouldn't plow it. And that kinda stirred up some dust every time, because there's certain people that want it and certain people that don't want it on the road. So they don't wanna put in anything towards keeping the road up to date, so it will be plowed. So that's one. We don't have any paperwork stating that we should be even doing this, because as the state's policies and procedures, there should be one that's approved by the select board. And we have right money allocated for it also. So in the process of that, road itself is not by any means in a, in a good condition to plow. And it keeps getting worse, cause no one's really doing anything to it, including the tar section of it. All the bushes are growing into the roads. There's just no maintenance over there. The town, and it also states that it's open to the town. I can't see what the town has any benefits of it. It's a dead end road with probably a handful of houses on it. So, right now, I, I have to take money out of another account to fulfill the plowing of it. I had, um, a few years ago, put it out to bid, so the town trucks were plowing it. And then, but I had nothing stating that we were to plow. So I don't want it.
Okay, so one on sixty-eight. I get the plum tree and the pine tree mixed up.
Things put a tree up.
It's almost across between.
Okay, yeah, no, yeah, it's over by, uh, past Plainview.
They could've built a new little house and it's right across from there.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, so has a letter gone to the homeowners recently? When was the last time we sent anything to the homeowners?
Honestly, they're supposed to be the ones that bring it forth. And it's supposed to be a hundred percent from everybody on the road that signs each one of those sheets stating that they want it, they're gonna maintain it throughout the course, as the states and the policies and procedures that you have here, which is the town.
So, so if I'm understanding this correct, we're looking at a couple things here. Number one, this is a policy that's before us for review, to see if we wanna keep the policy or change the policy. And it looks like it was approved in two thousand and two and perhaps amended a month later, back in two thousand and two, and hasn't been touched since. So it's a twenty-two-year-old policy. So first question becomes, does this policy still make sense to have? And then if it does, then the next question is, what are we gonna do about enforcing the policy? And how do we work that and communicate that? Cause it's very possible that the people on these roads weren't here in two thousand and two when the policy was written and have no clue that they're supposed to petition the town for assistance.
We would certainly have to look at what the provisions of the Mass General Law are.
There, it's, it's like three sentences. There's nothing super specific in it. It just clarifies that the removal of snow or ice from such a way shall not constitute a repair of the way. Cause you can't repair private ways with public funds, right? So they're clarifying that. And it says, removal of snow and ice from such private ways within its limits and open to the public use, as may be designated by the selectmen, provided that for the purposes of, yeah, same thing. May appropriate money.
Alright, have we appropriated any money to do this?
No.
Great.
And Travis, and the highway budget has been eating it for several years now.
So, the question I have, what does public use mean? What is the meaning of public use? As a drive-through type thing to get to another street? Is that what they're saying by public use? Or public use to be able to drive up there and park and go through a trail and walk a trail?
That, I would be more of a public use as well. I think both of them would be.
Yeah, as cutting through to get to another street or something that everybody can use, like go walk on a trail.
Yeah.
But I happen to drive up the road myself and it's a mess.
Which, um...
Yeah, it, it's a mess and...
School bus doesn't go up it?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, it's, it needs work, needs a lot of work. The end of it's dirt, what is a turnaround? And I have, just drove up my pickup truck and it took me a three-point turn to turn around, so there's no way.
It's a dead end, right?
Yeah, yeah.
How many, how many houses, do we know?
I'm thinking there's two, what, six or seven houses, maybe?
Might be more.
Yeah. Sixty-eight, sixty-eight.
Yeah, there's not a lot.
I wonder if they, you know, it's a question of money for them to...
The only problem, this, this is my thought on this. Problem is, we're almost in fall and we can't drop this bomb. It's hard to drop a bomb on them right before plowing season.
Yeah.
But right now, we're not plowing any of them but Plum Tree, correct?
Correct, correct. So that's the only issue. Now, it's kinda, in my mind, it's kinda tough to send a letter out and say, we're not plowing your road, where it's been done the last two or three years. I, I personally, this is my recommendation, and it's, doesn't mean anything. I would send a letter out to them, put them on notice that if we can find the money in the budget somewhere, I think it's what, fourteen, eighteen hundred, Travis?
Eighteen hundred dollars.
Eighteen hundred?
In twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dollars. Four fifty a month for December, January, February, and March.
Depends on how much it sells, right?
So if we can afford to, so...
I was over a couple hundred bucks this year on that one.
It was only two hundred this year?
It was a couple over.
Over, okay.
What they had sitting there. The problem, what I have here is that if we let it go through this year, they still didn't fix the road and we still have to plow that road that is not very, it's not ready to be plowed. And the contractor had mentioned at one time, you know, last year that, hey, you know, the road's not that great. And I said, yeah, I understand. And unfortunately, um, there is a lot to do to maintain a road, especially through a winter like we had last year. So, I mean, that's why there's supposed to be a contract, cause they're stating that they're gonna maintain it two out a year. That means throughout the winter, so if it starts getting really bad, they gotta go up and fix it.
Would it be productive?
Gave money somewhere from a budget, you know, um, to my budget to take...
So what if we did something along the line, you know? I know we've always done Plum Tree, but I feel like if you're treating one different than the other roads, it's a problem, right? What if we sent, are we planning to do a special town meeting this fall, Nate?
Yes, but there's nothing that is re, that couldn't really wait till annual.
I was gonna ask, if, would it be productive then for us to, let's say, you send a letter to them explaining essentially information that we need to know, invite them or ask them to come to a, a meeting where we could discuss and find out on there, from them, what's, what the problem been over the years, that you can't keep up the road? Just so we know what we're talking about, because it just might be after all these years, they can't afford it.
Well, it could also be new people that have no idea, cause they've moved. How many people have moved?
But, so I'm saying, would it be productive, do you think, to have them come?
I don't think that's on us though, right? Like I think, you know, when you move into a, a road and it's a private way, you know, you need to do your research when you move into it. I don't think they have any way they're gonna know this, right? Like there's no way they're going to know that piece. Other, other road people aren't even asking, cause they probably don't even need to know this is an option. And people at Plum Tree have always been doing this. I can tell you from Streeter Road, they were very well organized. They worked on the road every year to repair it. We did workday, you know, like they had worker bees, all of those pieces, so like...
But there are more houses on Streeter Road too.
Yes, but they got them sewn together. The problem is here, and I think this is likely what will happen, right? We'll send a letter to, we'll pull from the assessor's list or reg, registered voters, however you wanna do it, a list of all the addresses on each of these roads to a mass mailing, right? It's gonna cost about a hundred and fifty bucks by the time you're done from postage, more? Two hundred dollars by the time you're done with postage, plus or minus, give or take, to each of these houses. You send them a copy of the policy with a letter that says, hey, just to let you know, the select board meeting on...
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth of September, the select board voted to re-up their plowing of private roads policy, which had been updated since two thousand and two. For everyone's purposes, a copy of this policy along with the application for winter plowings attached on the back. If you feel that the town should or you would like the town to consider plowing your private way, we need one of these signed by each owner of your road, no later than September thirty-first or September thirtieth, to be considered for the plowing season of FY twenty-six. Otherwise, unfortunately, based on our policy, we're unable to plow your road. Now, once we receive that, if we receive it from all of the property owners on that street, which is already a large feat, right? We'll then schedule you before the select board and have a discussion. And then invite Travis back and see what we can figure out from there. And he can look at the road and see if the roads are in shape. But make, make them come to the table with something. Even they, even the Plum Tree Lane people, right? You want us to continue plowing, start here.
That was gonna be my suggestion as well.
That is, that's the only one we're doing, Plum Tree. So clearly, as the state's implementing the procedures, is they're supposed to bring it forth to it with all of it signed and with the understanding that they have to maintain it through the year.
But if you, if, it comes before us for review, Travis, and you say, hey, this road is not suitable for us to be plowing this year, then we don't plow it. Because you're not gonna pay, you're gonna end up paying three, four times as much on the, the person. We're not obligated. Key's gonna, I'm trying to think where she's going here.
Just on the flip side, a couple of the other roads may be suitable for plowing.
And they may, but why not give them the opportunity?
Why are we talking about the other roads? They're out of scope for this particular, for this particular problem, right? I mean, the other roads, we can send them the notification, but it seems like there's only one road in question that we're plowing right now. We need to figure out if we should continue to do it, right?
Well, that's because they may not know about it. That's, that's the problem with having a policy that nobody knows about.
If we send out the mailing Heather just spoke about, then they'll all know about it.
And then I think to Katie's point, it might add more potential roads on the list moving forward. But if they're maintained to the level, it keeps the cost down. And we put it before a town meeting. And town meeting can decide whether or not to vote to appropriate additional funds.
I hope we don't have to have a town meeting full of this and prior year, because that would be, that would be it.
This, this private road thing, we're, we're in the process of why it was brought up is the fact that we don't have anything in black and white from them that was agreed to from the select board at any time to plow Plum Tree. But we've been doing it, and I had concerns eight years ago. That's why I took the town trucks off it and I put it out to bid. And I didn't even wanna do that. But they had, like I said, some people at the time would come forth and go, hey, we want it, but all the people don't wanna put in. But that's not the stipulations here of the policies and procedures of the town. The fact of the matter is now, they're over, we don't, to plow that road is over what I've had in there for however long. You know, so now it's coming out of another budget of mine. And we've all had restricted budgets recently. And I, you know, it's, it seems like it's only a couple thousand dollars, but a couple thousand dollars can go a long way.
Excuse me, Travis. Article three of the two thousand and fourteen Special Town Meeting is to see if the town will vote to authorize the DPW to plow the private roads known as Streeter Road and Plum Tree Lane with necessary funds to cover related expenses to be approved with FY fifteen Department of Public Works budget or take any action relative thereto? So at one point, we were doing this correctly.
Okay, so...
Yeah, fourteen, that's expired.
Ten years ago.
Yeah.
Yes, it's...
Okay, it's expired.
Cause it's supposed to be annually from a select board and a town meeting.
And go to town meeting.
And then every three years from the form perspective.
Well, is there any kind of a compromise we can arrive at with part, partly what Heather was describing, but in the same sense with Peter's point? Because it's not just a question of, yes, these folks have not been doing what they're doing, neither have we. So my point is, is there some kind of a compromise where we can be acting as, as information so that they know that this is what it will be like? And I would lean more towards what Peter's saying. This is a heck of a time to tell someone, sorry, but you're not gonna be plowed out. Because they, obviously that road sounds like they don't have any choices either. So what are they gonna do? Where, as a compromise, if we still try to get the information and they'll still do what you were suggesting, but give them till next year to...
I have that.
So in other words, I'm asking us to take, bite the bullet for this winter, because I think it's a very short notice to expect them to be able to do all of that and then still repair their road before the snow starts to fly in there, so...
So I guess my concern with the Plum Tree Lane piece though, is in two thousand and fourteen, we did the right way, which means in two thousand and fourteen, we likely had these from Plum Tree Lane, which also means that Plum Tree Lane is the one of the many listed here that knows the rule.
At least the...
At least the original residents.
At least the original residents. Assuming it hasn't entirely turned over.
Yeah, we don't know that either, yeah.
In two thousand and fourteen, this was a ten-year-old street and is now a twenty-year-old street. So it has deteriorated that much over that year. However, I just am in a suggestion, suggestion only. I don't want you guys to get lost on the fact that you are deciding if this policy is appropriate for the town at this time. If we're not necessarily, the decision on the policy will then start a conversation about Plum Tree or another, another street on this, that may or may not be on this one.
So this wasn't voted in by the town at all? This was by the select board?
This is state.
No. Not state, this was by us only, not voted in.
Oh, by the town, no, no.
But the town has obviously approved appropriations for this in the past, namely two thousand and fourteen.
So this, this policy is to protect the town. And I honestly read through it and I do not see anything that would hurt the town, as long as it falls.
Right.
So what I'm saying is it hasn't been followed. This is what, this is what I've been saying. It hasn't been followed. The town shouldn't be doing anything, because we have no documentation that covers the town in case something happens on their road while plowing. That's why the contract is supposed to be in place. So what we can do, there's two months to, for them... So what we can do, this two months to, for them to fix the road, just to get them through to do it the right way, if the rest of them wanna do it that way, is that the letter goes out, they have to fix, say, we went over a bunch of policies or procedures in town, found out this one had been overlooked. Unfortunately, we do not have a contract to be honestly doing your road. Uh, in order for us to do your road, just to get you through this year because of the short notice, the road would have to be fixed, and then everything would have to be, everybody on the road would have to sign their correct petition on here from everybody to state that they're gonna maintain that road, and if we don't, then the town has nothing to do with it, you have it in black and white to protect the town.
Travis, how much, how much in your estimate, I don't mean money-wise, but what would actually have to be done to bring that road, so that you can plow it this winter? I'm not saying that the.
I, I honestly haven't driven down it this year. Um, every time I do, the dirt section is, is usually really bad down the right side where all the water runs, and, um.
It's in tough shape, it's in probably the shape that Dogwood was, you know what I mean? Till it's.
Section is all probably up now, so I, I can see that from the.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's in way disrepair, and then it, and then it ends, it becomes dirt, and it's like three houses at the end that use the dirt, so.
Well, again, I'm going, there's, there's lack of information on both sides now, in terms of, as someone said, oh, just a few minutes ago, if the people even change who were living there, cause they may not even know about this at all, you know?
They gotta be put on notice, first of all, so, that's a start.
Absolutely, but I don't, I don't think it's quite fair in the sense, we expect that they're gonna be able to come, come up with everything between now and we get snow sometimes.
Probably not, it's a lot of money.
I mean, we.
But is it really fair to the other twelve roads, who may not know this policy even exists?
Well, not, not to mention what happens if the people that we hire, something goes horribly awry with their truck, because we're plowing something that isn't proper. My whole thing is, if we do send this notice and policy to the residents of that street, and ask them to at least meet with, you know, like the DPW and stuff like that, to go over the, get at least this year, this stuff done, everybody sign it, cut this stuff back, like bare minimums, you know what I mean? To at least make it plowable in parentheses this year, but realistically, they need to bring it up to stuff next year, and that would give them at least time that hopefully a plow won't like, you know, just bust in, and, or cause an accident, or run into a ditch, or whatever, you know?
Well, that's why I was asking what he was estimating it would be to bring it up.
Yeah, he'd have, he'd have to walk in.
So it could be plowed, Pete thinks, Peter thinks it should be, would have to be paved particularly.
Yeah, but Travis, Travis speaks in Massachusetts municipal costs, which is three times the cost of, you know?
No, he can say this needs to be graded, this needs to be.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that we, we're fixing it, I, what, what we'd be asking these people to, to do, just so that we could take care of them for the winter.
Okay. Okay. Good.
Yeah, so, so here's another thing, uh, I mean, if I was a, a resident on one of these other streets, and I found out that Plum Tree Lane's been plowed, and they're not doing the other streets.
Well, I know, that's what I was saying, that's what I'm saying.
For a decade.
For a decade, I'd be like, are you kidding me?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I, we could've been getting our stuff plowed for free all the time.
So I'm trying to be the devil here, so.
I already said that.
You know.
So what if?
Well, what we've. What we've found out is we have, we have a policy that we, we've not been following, right?
Yep.
Correct, yeah.
Correct.
Well, the first thing is, we've gotta get the policy, we've, we've gotta start enforcing this policy and having it done properly. So regardless of which street you live on, like Heather said, we notify every resident that, you know, they gotta do this, right? If we don't get the response back, then, then they're off the list. The ones that we get responses back from every avenue, in particular this prom Plum Tree Lane, you know, I like the idea that we say, okay, you've all petitioned, we gotta take it to town meeting, before we officially put your, your road on the plowing list. But to Jeff's point, sticking them without plowing the road this late in the season for this year is the wrong thing to do. Um, so I would say we cross our Ts, we dot our Is, we exonerate ourselves from any liability issues. If we plow the street, or if we hire someone to plow the street, and we do it this year, and everybody gets their ducks in a row going forward with this document from all these private ways.
But what does that do for it, the road not being at least brought up to some kind of the, the hazard conditions that it's in?
If Plum Tree or any road in that condition were to come in front of the select board, you could then ask those questions and see.
Okay, all right, so in other words, they'd have to petition regardless, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put in their hands.
So if we're being fair by that policy.
So when the letter goes out, is it just going to Plum Tree, or is it going to all of the privates?
I was thinking it would go to all of them.
Every, it would go, yeah.
Should go all, correct, and then.
Then let them figure out, think of their stuff in.
Right now, the only issue is Plum Tree, yeah.
But if they don't get their stuff in, then it's not an issue.
If. Yeah. But getting their stuff in only makes some good for next year.
Cause we're looking to do it.
Well, this year.
Well, getting their stuff in opens the door to the conversation of what do we do now?
Today, this, this year, yeah, to get.
Yeah, but technically, it's gotta go in front of a meeting to approve that money.
We have to eat it, or it'd have to come out of peace.
Technically, it does, but you don't know when special town meeting, if it is, is going to be in the first place.
Yeah.
We. It would be a boring special town meeting, and it would likely be the first weekend, the first week of November.
Why do we need a town meeting to continue doing something that we're doing?
Because the second part of the policy says town meeting must appropriate funds.
Cause we never appropriate funds.
You know, yes.
But we appropriated it once, right, many years ago?
In fourteen.
For one year.
But it must be for one year.
Each year has to be done.
Yeah, we've been doing it year after year after year until this process went.
It's a bit of an exhaustive policy.
Cause it says no plowing of private ways will be undertaken by the town unless the town meeting approves such, such appropriation, so.
Cause that way the townsfolk are approving to use money for not to repair a private way, but to plow a private way.
State taxpayer money, yeah. Correct.
That's their thing, all right.
I, I don't think that, cause it says it right there, that it's supposed to be approved. Yes, we've been doing it, cause obviously boards change and whatever, it's lost in the, the, the table work. But the fact of the matter is, it's telling you right there, we know about it, and honestly, you shouldn't go any further.
Okay.
Well, to Pete, to Peter's point, you know, it's gonna be a challenge to get someone in there to plow that road this year, I wish we had talked about this in April as opposed to September. Uh, you know, I think we, we have a history of doing something year after year after year, whether it's right or wrong. You know, I don't think it's something we should just stop on a dime and stick these residents with an issue of an unplowed road.
Well, I think, what we talked about a little bit tonight, I think there's some consensus for the notion of, we send it to everyone, and we put the ball in all of the residents' courts at this point, and get them responsible for getting these liability waivers back to us.
I agree.
If Plum Tree Lane comes back, and we have all of their liability waivers, then let's have a conversation and go from there.
And I'll know relatively quickly how they're gonna feel about this, cause if there's a letter going to their house on letterhead with a number on it, and they're either frustrated, or hey, I didn't know this, they're gonna call, so, or email.
Or come down.
Or, yeah, or come down.
Have to check.
I agree.
All right.
Is it realistic to think that, uh, a letter could go out and expect responses before our next meeting?
No.
So, how, what kind of a time span should we have for them to get back to us, because we still then have to discuss again?
I'd say first meeting October is probably gonna be.
That's your next meeting?
That's your next meeting?
Oh.
Because of the way September falls.
Yeah.
Oh, that's almost twenty days, isn't it?
Yeah, we're going three weeks.
That.
Well, how long's it gonna take to get the letter out?
A week.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
That's this week.
Yeah.
I know, we do the, the door-to-door mailings, and Rob's here on Wednesday, so if I first thing come in and say, hey, I need an a butter's list for this li- this street, this street, this street, and this street, we can pull those.
Okay.
Do any of these stick out to anybody as long streets, or?
Well, Mechanics Street doesn't even exist anymore.
Yeah.
That used to be on Main Street, we had to figure it out, cause if you put it in Google, it doesn't come up, when we were doing the town center stuff, Sandy, myself, and Tony,
So Mechanics Street doesn't exist?
We're trying to figure it out.
Mechanics Street. I think that's what I was telling Heather the other day with the girl in her yard.
Where it was. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's where, uh, I think it was, the, we figured it out, I think it was the spot next to Mr. Mike's and that house, there used to be like a road there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and now it doesn't exist.
So, so the rest of these roads are as is, they all exist?
Those, they all exist, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm looking at these lists, and it, the, the roads aren't very long, and there's not many, the houses are so spread out.
No, they're all like, most of them are dead ends, so.
So what's, what kind of deadline should we put on getting the paperwork back from them?
I would say before a meeting, yeah, next meeting, yeah.
I would say, yeah, October first, when's our next meeting, October?
Okay.
October seventh.
Oh, I'd say October first, that way we have time if someone's actually complied, we can stick them on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Or at least one stuff, yeah.
Anybody agree on that one, October first?
Mr. Chairman, would you accept some motions? You can probably throw those all together.
Okay, I'll, let me, let me hear the motion, thank you, yeah, yeah.
All right, hold on, let me get ready.
Okay, ready?
Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a compound motion, uh, first of all.
Compound motion, I don't think I've ever heard a compound motion, you know?
I would like to.
Is this legal?
Uh, to, uh, make a motion that we approve the plowing of private way policies and procedures as written with the modification from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Uh, I would like to have the, uh, make a motion to approve the private roads list as written, striking Mechanics Street, the one dated September ninth, twenty twenty four. I would like to give direction to the town administrator and his staff to send notices to all of the private roads listed regarding the existence of our winter plowing of a private way policy and application, and request completion of said applications no later than October first. For each street in completion, in order to be considered for the FY twenty five plowing season, and applications that are complete amongst all residents of a road, shall we put that road upon the select board's agenda for the October seventh meeting?
Before it's seconded, let me ask a question, and then be suggesting, uh, a slight addition to when, the beginning of it, when you were saying to approve the policies, um, should we put, put down, approve with the date?
I'd say mark as reviewed, cause we're not really changing much.
Or just add, we have reviewed it, so we want, with the date.
With the changes in, in, in Select Board, we will be amending it, so to amend so.
Okay, so then we, then we have reviewed it, September sixteenth, two, two thousand twenty four, would you be willing to put that in?
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Did you get that? Do you understand? Okay.
You okay with that, Patricia, we haven't had a second yet, but okay, all right, so a motion's been made.
Second.
And second, any further discussion, questions on it? Mike, you have anything?
Actually, actually, I do, um, and is Printers Brook, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mike Stahl, five Lombard Road. Does Printers Brook Road off of Lombard Road appear on the list?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, Printers Brook Drive.
Printers Brook Drive, thank you very much.
Drive. I had to Google that one, I'm like, what the hell is that?
Is that it? And actually, with Travis still there, so through the chair, Travis, can you tell me if Printers Brook Road has been on the plowing list, and if it complied with the rules?
It's not plowed and.
Not currently?
Yeah.
But if it was in the past?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you that, because I, I couldn't even find anything that, uh, Plum Tree and Streeter were supposed to be plowed.
Okay.
Which, really, they're not supposed to be, cause I don't have anything up with it.
Okay, thank you, Travis, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, anything further, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Is there any houses on that road, Mike?
Printers Brook?
Yeah.
It's very similar to Plum Tree, except for the condition, there are about six or seven houses on that road, dead end.
Okay.
Where's it done, are you on the right?
Yes, pass.
On the right, yeah.
On the right hand side goes up the hill.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we finished with Travis, or is the potholes gonna be involved?
Travis, you don't have any changes to the potholes, right, since it's just a match, it's an accepted match general law?
I have a question.
Uh, the, our policy that we have there is, is good.
Is what?
The policy that's involved, the whole policy, well, we have one right there.
Yeah, can I just ask a follow-up on that, Travis? So it looks like what we have here is the, the reporting procedure, but it's published from, unless someone has something I don't have, this is the right one, right?
I haven't seen that.
It's in law, it's in law, right?
Right?
That's what I printed off of you, right?
Okay, I, I think so, okay, so, so this is just a recite of the MGL, it's from Maya from two thousand and six.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
It pretty much is just telling us in many ways what we should be doing for hole. I don't think this is really what we're looking for, unless we're trying to tell you, Travis, how to do the, how to keep a log on potholes. I think we need a pothole policy that just says, hey, Mister Resident, or person driving through the town, you hit a pothole, here's what you do.
Like how do we want one?
You send in the following information, the town sends it to the insurance company, and the insurance company gets back to you, and here's the MGL to cite. Like, I, I don't.
Yeah, but we have a reasonable amount of time, once reported, to fix the pothole, it's more being re.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask that this item is tabled until such time as, uh, the director and I have the time to look through and do a survey of other towns' pothole policy, probably two meetings, if maybe not even.
Okay.
I. I just wanna give you something, Travis, that is gonna work for the public, I understand exactly what you're saying, and that's true, but that simple is, you know, putting a copy of the MGL out there, so people know it's a reasonable amount of time. But my biggest concern, and people can file a pothole claim at any point, we should be sending them to the insurance company, and they generally send them a thank you, but the town has not liable letter.
Yep.
Ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of the time.
Okay, so then we, yeah, we'll table that then, and you guys can.
Can I tandem that with looking at Travis's mailbox policy?
Sure.
Okay.
Just put it on the show, that's always a fun one.
Yeah, you, you hit it, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, do we have anything else for Travis?
Finds a tick, finds a, Travis is like, oh.
No, thank you, sir.
Travis, thanks very much.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
You too.
Bye.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, uh, let me go through it with you guys, and then, excuse me. We have, um, a resignation, Christina Jeffords, she was the Assessor's Clerk, Inspector today, uh, tw- two thousand twenty four. Uh, we have four sets of mi- of, um, minutes. Um, the second one, July eleventh, that was the goal retreat that we attended, the others were executive sessions. Everyone was there, including Heather, on July fourth, she was here, uh, virtually. And we also have, um, qualification of appointments and wage authorizations, uh, James Aries, uh, call firefighter, paramedic, fire department, wage twenty-one ninety-two, expires six-thirty twenty twenty-five. Uh, Lorraine Michaels, land use clerk, land use department, wage nineteen oh five, effective six-thirty twenty twenty-five. Zachary McBride, laborer, DPW, wage twenty-two thirty-six, effective six-thirty twenty twenty-five. Is there any questions or hold, or, yes?
Just for the good of everyone here, the Lorraine appointment is just land use. Twelve fourteen, Patricia is going to do her executive assistant responsibilities, and Lorraine is going to do land use. I have spoken with Alec, our part-time planner, and Chair Chris Monroe about this, we all believe it is a very fair amount of, of work for that many hours, if it is just the administrative side of things, and between Alec and myself, it should just be the administrative side of things.
Got it.
Okay.
I got one other question, Zachary McBride, he was a new hire, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause it wasn't checked.
Are they fully staffed now?
No.
Still down one?
Down.
One, maybe two, I'd have to.
Great.
Really?
Yeah.
The last I heard, we were down two, uh, yeah. We've lost Travis, so.
So, can I ask about James?
Yes.
What is, what is happening with him, cause it looks like he's.
I think he left. Yep, so he was a full-time firefighter, paramedic, and then he recently got a job in Sterling.
Okay.
And left, there were some life changes and a monetary incentive, and that about it, and he's still very passionate about the community, and loves serving it, so he wants to serve as a on-call firefighter when he is available.
Okay.
He was the president of their union, and, yeah, did, he just hit his ten years last year.
Okay.
Are there any holds or any other questions pertaining to anything under the consent agenda? If not, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made a second, any questions, any discussions, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Okay, uh, new business, we don't have anything specific, unless, uh, somebody else has something that is to be brought up at this time, if not, we'll go right to the old business. Um, which is the cable access policy, Nate, you wanna fill? Um, which is the cable access policy, Nate, you wanna fill us in on that?
Cable access policy, I ask that you mark it reviewed as presented, with the changes that have been in asterisks to all the changes, Select Board, Select Men to Select Board, Chairman to Chair. Mark it reviewed, I'll put it in the, in the policy packet that we'll release at the, at the end of the year, once we're done all this.
Okay, any, any discussion on it, if not, that's what we need for a motion, is to, to mark it as reviewed as presented.
I don't think I have a hard copy of that one. I have a hard copy of, I think, tonight's, but I don't think I have that one. I think I sent the message earlier, but not having. That being said, I'm okay with the cable access policy.
Okay, so can we have a motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we, um. You wanna read it? Where are we going, right here? I move the, to mark the cable access policy as reviewed and presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion, any questions? Chris, you look like you have a, a question. Oh, okay, seeing none, all in favor?
He's just living the big time.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried, okay?
Mr. Chair, when we opened the public meeting policy to look at hybrid matters, I did not realize that I was opening up a wormhole. So, so I respectfully request more time to review some of the policies I received from different town administrators and how they
Okay.
have any, turns out during COVID, everyone wrote a hybrid policy.
Consider, consider it tabled until you decide that you wanna bring it back, okay? So, um, let's take care of the old business, let's go to administrative matters. A request for authorization of the Ware River Trail Crossing Project, um, they're asking, you wanna explain it as far as the grant?
Yes, this is that grant that is in two parts, the longer part that is creating the ADA path up on Malone Road, and the smaller part, uh, twenty-seven thousand and some change to put some flashing lights for people crossing the road and for animals, and just to generally protect the area.
The animals are gonna press the button?
No, it's a, it's a.
No, it's a sensor, it's a motion sensor, so if someone's coming down the path.
Motion sensor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be going all night.
Flappy.
This is the grant that Mark Kreske and the Open Space Committee were, received a little while back, and we procured it in accordance with the procurement rules, and we got two, um, quotes, and this was the lower of the two. And it's actually the same people that did the signs for downtown.
Who put up signs for the turkeys to say, cross here?
Yeah, I know.
Uh, the grant covers the full cost of this?
Yes.
And can you just explain to me what it is in layman's terms, what are these things?
It's a sign so that when a deer or a human is going to cross the road, they don't get hit by a truck.
The flashy yellow things, the crosswalk signs.
To let you know as a driver that there's a pathway there, because what happens is because the trail is very well part of nature, you can't, you don't know that there's gonna be a person who's gonna step out, or hop out on a bike in front of, or a deer, but I'm guessing it's more so for the people.
And where, and where does this trail cross the road?
Williamsville.
Williamsville.
Where Williamsville, uh, turns into, towards Berry.
Down the bottom of the hill.
Right at that bridge, though, or racing.
So, to be, to be clear, this is gonna be on Williamsville Road.
Yeah.
There's a foot trail that crosses Williamsville Road, and these signs are gonna be on each side of the road where the foot trail crosses.
At that.
I think snowmobiles are on it, too.
Flashing and.
Yeah. Yeah, snowmobiles.
Warning people that someone or something is crossing the road.
Yes, and the board has already accepted the grant and authorized me to sign a contract for it, at this point, we are authorizing the purchase.
It's just like the crosswalk.
Yeah, yeah, it's a flashy yellow one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's not just like, there's no crosswalk there, right?
No.
No, it's the same light pole as the crosswalk, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
It's the same, basically the same unit, that flashes, you push the button, and it's got strobes.
The yellow, that light.
Yeah, the motorist doesn't have to stop if the lights are going off, do they?
Yeah.
Uh, that would be a good heads up, like, at least slowed it up.
That's.
Is there a stop sign there?
No, it's a crosswalk, no, it's a trail.
No.
Is it a crosswalk?
Well, it's, that's what's, it, it's alerting that there's a, a trail path.
A cross, it's not a crosswalk, it's a crossing, or.
Yes, it's a crossing there.
Right, but it's a law you have to stop for people in a crosswalk. So you have to stop at, like, in front of the alehouse, you have to stop if those lights are going off.
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause there's a crosswalk there. But if these lights are going off, there's no law that says a car have to stop, if you're smart, you do stop if something's going across the road.
You're gonna be having a bad week.
Yeah, generally, somebody there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's no, so it's just, they're just warning.
Your chair is pretty, you're about to go out.
Yeah.
There's no crosswalk, there's no stop signs.
But even if you're not on a cross, a crosswalk, and you're a pedestrian crossing from one side of the road to the other, pedestrian has the right of way, do they not? If they're not on a crosswalk?
Yeah, as long as they're not jaywalking in the city, you gotta be in a crosswalk, but yeah, normally, like, if you cross the road, there's not, like, in front of my house, it's not a crosswalk.
Correct. Correct.
It don't have people bad.
Yeah, no, not a good thing. It's just a warning, and it's, it's a good idea, I think.
Anything else? Okay, um, we need a motion, basically, basically to authorize the Ware River Trail Crossing Project for a total of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, and authorize the town administrator to enter into the necessary agreements.
So moved.
Motion made, can we have a second?
Second.
And second, any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, yes.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Um, second thing here is the request for the acceptance of the quitclaim deed for forty-eight Gardner Road, you wanna explain that one?
Yep, the quitclaim deed acceptance is part of the closing process. We are going through all systems, seem go to close on Friday, so this is one of the final spots, one of the final actions for you guys. I have the quitclaim deed to be signed tonight, and the second ban, that does not, the bond anticipation notice, that does not need formal spoken approval, and is signed from the Select Board like the one last week.
So, uh, what you need to sign tonight, is that for all of us, or just?
Yep.
Okay. All right, anyone have any questions on that one? Okay, can we get a motion right here?
Yeah, I move to authorize and sign the quitclaim deed for forty-eight Gardner Road and authorize the town administrator to sign necessary documents.
Yeah, so you've got, this is the only one you guys have to sign.
Second, and second. Maybe second, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carried. Aye, I, uh, letter C, request for authorization of roof siding, window, door gutter replacements at forty-eight Gardner Road. This is the one, if you look, it's, it's cheap, there are four options available, so.
And you could combine them, uh, those are just four options that I gave you as proposals, you could take pieces or do whatever.
I think.
I'd like you to kick it, kick it off, cause I can't.
Oh, so, my feeling in this is, um, so doing everything, uh, scope of the work, one, two, three, I don't see where, where's the.
Option.
It's option one, is, I believe is what you're looking for.
It's soup to nuts, including.
So option one covers the gutters also.
Everything, yeah.
It's one shebang, the main contractor does it, it does, um, puts us over what year budget you have worked by thirty K, um, which I think is small money when it comes to it. But I, I think to get it all done soup to nuts, A to B, weather tight, gutters don't have to worry about, you don't have to worry about putting it out to bid to another contractor.
Yeah.
Um, me personally, I think your money ahead, cause some, you might run into, you know, I mean, different contractor could be, could end up costing more than thirty thousand dollars.
How difficult are locks and mechanisms? That's twenty-five grand on top of, that's the only thing that in my mind, I was like, oh, maybe I propose to them that we do that later, or see what.
But that's the hardware, that's buying all new hardware.
Yeah.
And you took, and if you have an emergency door, you have to have a special latch on it with an exit sign, and it's, it's the push handle, it locks.
Yeah.
It's one-way, you can't come in from outside, that stuff is not cheap. And what, I don't know how many emergency exits are on there, a couple?
Couple.
Couple, so, um, I mean, that's my feeling, I just get it done, get it over with, soup to nuts.
Nate, which document are you referencing?
What am I personally reading, or what documents are filed?
What am I?
No, which one are you referencing from the packet? Cause I don't remember seeing something with options, I remember seeing that new capacity construction letter.
I don't either.
Oh, there was definitely, there was definitely something in the packet.
But I'm not.
There's all four options.
I'm not referencing it, so.
So the email with options to you.
Oh, it's in an email, it's not part of the packet.
As, as an email.
Okay.
Well, the packet is just new capital.
Do I have to print it for you, Heather?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you print any one, do you?
They, they actually have it already, it, the.
Do we have it already?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where's?
Then you're ready. Should be in the email already.
Oh, printed?
Yeah, I don't know if they have that one, Nate.
I don't have that.
I don't have that thing.
Get on submarine recommendations, I'll got it, I got it, I got it, sit, 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 sit.
Well, while, while she's getting that, I'd like to second from what Peter was talking about, so I think in the long run, uh, will, it will be cheaper. Correct, to Peter's point, if, whatever is put off, you're talking about having to get another contractor, paying for everything that has to be brought in, et cetera.
Well, what?
Where the, one that you have in option one, he's there already, and to do everything, so I, I also, we, we.
Well, what's the additional money that we're talking about?
Well, Peter's estimate was around, around thirty thousand.
Well, not mine, it's just.
Well, yeah.
It was four seventy-two, what I told Peter was that we're above thirty thousand dollars over where I thought we should have been. Cause there was a little bit of wiggle room built in, and there was that seventeen thousand dollars that you had requested you put in at the very end.
Didn't we go up to thirty, though, I thought we went up to thirty?
Nope, seventeen.
No, okay. So it's another thirteen beyond that, then, right?
And that's, of course, the.
So in the long run, thirteen thousand dollars is.
Short money.
Right.
If you never have those.
Mm-hmm.
So. You know.
Yeah, I don't have that, I don't, what it, what?
It was in the e, it was sent in an email.
Which email?
Today?
No.
No, it's been there for a while.
No, last week.
Yeah.
I don't remember, it was so many emails, I just like.
Only it was a mental.
Yeah, uh, oh, yeah, you and your bad boss, let me see, think of the emails.
Forty-eight Gardner Road contract?
Yeah, there are four options. Want me to read them, I got them.
No, please go ahead.
Bring it.
Okay.
I think someone's printing it for us.
Yes, someone's yelling from the other room.
Four times.
Someone's gonna unlock the door.
Okay.
Someone doesn't need to unlock the door.
You need a printer with a staple, I wish it was a staple. I'm a staple kind of guy. I get spoiled at the DLC, you know, and you get things, you just push buttons and a staple and printed and stacked and collated.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Or you can create your own option, create your own adventure book.
Just like build your own sandwich at Subway?
My whole two cents is soup to nuts is always the way to go, because when you have somebody else come in.
Yeah.
It's gonna be done in a different way.
So you're leaning the same way.
Oh, because when you have the second contractor come in, they're gonna do something that screws up and voids warranty for this contractor, and then this one's gonna point the finger at this one, this one's gonna point the finger at this one, and you're getting screwed in the long run. Have one contractor soup to nuts the whole damn thing, all day long, and it'll be cheaper anyway.
And we don't, so option one for you.
Yeah, it'll be cheaper anyway, because that second contractor's gonna, yeah.
Well, that's, that's the million dollar question, right, is it gonna be cheaper? Have we vetted that out, do we know that answer for sure?
You lose the contractor bid if you want to wait around and find out.
Which we don't wanna lose, you don't wanna lose that bid.
You, the, the, the add-on will go away, because by the time we get all the paperwork in, this guy's already gonna be started and vetted, and you told, you didn't take that option, so that's gonna be necessarily not on the table anymore.
And we could do it as a change order, but depending on the time and the project that he is, a- at that time, he, it could be more.
Change order, then include the doors.
Yep.
And the locks, right?
When, just so curious, Nate, I'm, I'm positive I asked you this question, I'm pretty positive you answered, and I totally don't remember what the answer is.
Pretty part of the life, I forgot.
Yeah, exactly, I left that part out, but yes. Um, when we checked the references, we confirmed that this vendor wasn't one who had lots of change orders, right?
Yep, no, I asked about the change orders, I spoke with all of the references, I called a reference for the subcontractor, the roof gentleman, and
They all passed, they passed the test.
In an email, I forget what it is exactly, but I justified the cost differential between the four oh two and the four seventy-two. It's a dumpster profit, it, none of it is pretty stuff that I really wanted to see, but it was just viable.
Okay.
Insurance.
Yes.
Okay. No, I, I agree with Peter and Katie, um, and Jeff on this one, and I think, you know, we're all in.
Yeah.
I'm a Christian, so.
Would you?
No, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to know what the, what the price would be for the gutters and the doors, I mean.
There's a quote for just the gutters and the doors in there, it's, uh.
From whom?
From the gentleman, from the company that was awarded the bid through the procurement process.
So is that seventy-six thousand dollars?
Yeah. Twenty for the doors, twenty.
And it's not, let me say, I can say this, the material prices are not crazy prices, the material prices are very good prices, it's the labor that's the killer.
Yeah.
You know, a hundred dollars an hour for a painter.
That's the state's fault.
Come on.
That's the state's fault.
And then a carpenter makes less than a har, a painter.
I know, I.
What's that?
It is what it is.
We have painters in town, and carpenters.
No, and they're not federal.
Well, yeah, but it's the. No, yeah, it's the prevailing wage, that's what kills you.
It's, I'm in the wrong business.
Lot more overhead, though, when you go that route.
I, I, I guess I, I'm wishing we had, you know, other bids for the gutters and doors to bump up against the seventy-six thousand dollar increase that this particular contractor is looking for.
Did the original bids that went out, we got, what, three in return?
So we got.
We Xed out two, or you Xed out two?
We got three or four in return, none of them, besides this person took the opportunities that were given out in the, uh, what do you call them, addendum, which noted that they could bid as a package deal, and we would consider gutters and doors. And then I got approval from Carolyn, our legal counsel, that we could do this in this fashion, because I did mention it in the addendum, or as a change order. But Chris, to your point, for us to then go back and do the change order, it's, it hits the threshold of procurement again. So we would have to do, not to say that it would, it would be difficult, it would be timely, and we, it may all still work out, but there's a chance that we go out, this company's the cheapest, and then you say, eh, you know, you didn't take the opportunity then, here's the, here's the cost.
And we can't do it till spring now, that's the other flip side.
Because of.
Time.
Yep.
Cause it has to go out for so many days, and then it has to be renewed.
That's if we do that, yeah.
Yeah, and that kinda stuff, so in other words, it could have to, it, the possibility of it not getting done before snow flies.
So I don't have, uh, so what's the gutter cost from Kappa? And then what's the door and hardware cost?
And that's, that's the entire, all the gutters all the way around, right?
That's, yeah, everywhere, downspouts, everything.
Yeah. It was out there measuring and everything, yeah.
Yeah. Well, they test, but it's like.
But, you know, my concern is that when you go to unique companies that specialize in these particular installations of gutters and door doors, they can usually offer you economies and get, you know, price break from manufacturers that and get, you know, price break from manufacturers that maybe this contractor doesn't get because he seems to wanna do everything and it's more like a G C.
Do you have some bids for this?
If we begin looking around like that, I'm in danger of losing the contractor we also, we presently have.
Well, I don't think for municipality you're gonna get, this isn't like a residential, like you do your house.
Right.
You're not, you're, you're looking at a big building and it's.
They're six inch gutters, by the way.
And it's a municipality.
They're not three and a half.
And there has to be certain procurement rules and all this other stuff. You're not gonna get the same kind of breaks that you or I, Chris, would if you're doing our own house or a smaller job. It's, it's a large job and when you start, the thing is you start piecemealing this stuff, you usually, people are gonna start pointing their fingers at who did what and avoided what warranty, and it all has to be done in a certain order anyway. Cause you can't have the gutter guy show up until the roof and the flashing and this is done and all this, and it has to drip just right into the edge and it has to all work at the same time and be installed all in one fell swoop.
That's a gutter. Not that we're gonna get to see that.
And it's the same with the doors being done with the siding and everything else. If you don't do it correctly, then you're, you're screwing up your water tightness and you're, yeah, you have to rip things off to put things in behind and it just, it doesn't make sense. It makes more sense to have, on this size project, have one company come in and do it all. So that was only one.
It's, it's more convenient, I'll agree with that, to do it your way, but is it the most economical way to do that?
Yes, because if there's.
Is what I'm challenging, you, you can't tell me yes, cause we got nothing against there.
If there's a problem, you have one stop shop.
You can't tell me yes, because you've got nothing to compare it against.
You can't have anybody pointing fingers. Well, that's the whole point of it, having to go out to bid. But nobody bid on it. So.
So they're replacing, they're putting and replacing gutters, right? So if there's no gutter someplace, but there should be gutters, they're gonna put gutters.
We're putting in.
Everything.
Five hundred and seventy-six point zero three two mastic high gloss white seamless gutters. At a unit price of five thirty-six, bringing the grand total to three thousand fifty-five twenty.
Which is cheap.
We're also bringing, putting on hanger with screw, four hundred and thirty of them. Outlet fourteen pipes.
So, so for price comparison, I just looked, so in Paxton last year, we did the library, so s- less than a third of the size of the building, if not even smaller, fifteen K.
For what?
For the library in Paxton to replace the gutters.
So what are you, what are you talking, uh?
And what's this costing us?
Two hundred feet?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand for the gutter portion.
Twenty thousand for the gutter portion, thirty-four thousand for the thirteen doors.
Oh, substantially.
And twenty-one thousand for the hardware.
And I can tell you from the fifteen thousand to the next lowest bidder, they weren't that close. They were, you know, at least five thousand dollars difference. But I had a sole proprietor who did ours.
And the next lowest cumulative bid that actually came in was two hundred thousand dollars more than this bid. Cause there are certain vendors that will just put in hoping that it.
Nobody did it.
Hoping that nobody did it and they.
We'll take that money. Yep. Cause nobody did it at all.
Well, if I might ask you, Chris, in the, uh, in the interest of time factor, time meaning in terms of to have the work done and so on, um, if we, as, there's four of us right now in favor of option one, if we disagree or disagree with what you're saying.
That's not the gutters.
No, I went, I went down after, that's the, that's the lock.
Yeah, you can, you can take your vote.
Okay. Could we get a motion then to see if how we're, how we'd like to go?
Like to make a motion that we proceed with option one, which includes everything. I like to, I'm sorry, more formalized, I don't have copies in front. I move to authorize the town administrator to enter into an agreement for the full project of forty-eight Gardner Road, including roof, siding, windows, gutters, doors, and locks for a total initial price of five hundred and forty-eight thousand one ninety-five and sixty-eight cents. I added in the words initial price.
Oh, okay.
On a date not to come before September twenty-first, cause we have to own the building first.
Okay. Can we add that to that, on a date?
Uh, I would assume by authorizing you, you're not going to sign too.
Nope.
Okay, so we're motion, we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion is made in second. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay. Motion carried, thank you, thanks Chris, et cetera. All right, uh, moving to the T A report.
I wanna read these really fast, cause I got a bunch of stuff. The capital improvement plan is due, the capital improvement submissions are due by board members and department heads by September twenty-fifth at noon. This includes a revised scope that we want all capital projects, new, ongoing, in development, something that you would be applying for a grant for. We want to have the capital improvement plan be one stop shopping for what we actually need. And in a partnership with the capital improvement plan, I put out the second year of the community capital improvement, the suggestions, but this year gave it an acronym. And turns out, people didn't not wanna do it, they didn't wanna read my buzzwords. So when I put it out as Hubbardston Pitch, they, they certainly, they certainly liked that a lot more. So that is due October first. Municipal aggregation, you're gonna see starting to come together. There's going to be a series of public hearings in the month of October, early November. That will be, that's almost two years in the making, so that would be, that'll be really good. I'd like to thank Francois for his partnership on that. The audit for F Y twenty-four happened last week. It was very early for a fiscal year audit, so I was happy that Mary and Kelly were able to get the paperwork out in such a timely fashion and we got them in here. We actually still have to wait for Worcester County Retirement in order to seal it up, but we will be good to go. They're usually obviously not that close, but we were really late with F Y twenty-three and pretty early with F Y twenty-four, that's why there was only three, four months in between the two.
Nate, on that, are they gonna issue a management ledger this year?
Yep.
Okay.
And I'm working on a couple of things because there wasn't really the opportunity of time in between the two, so a lot of the items are going to be very, very similar. So I'm trying to make some backend movement on those, namely the ambulance. I met with T E C today on lot fifty-seven Gardner Road, cause time is flying and we have approximately one year to make a decision on what we do with the polluted sand pit. I talked to them today and they are going to be sending me a phase two survey quote, which would allow us an additional two years to work with either someone that's going to be purchasing the pit behind it or a variety of other options. When I get that quote, I will send it over. We still have thirty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars in that account. From annual town meeting tw- twenty-two. The structural deficit working group is getting the band back together on that goal. We're gonna be meeting next week to discuss a deficit reduction plan. It'll likely take until closer to the end of the fiscal year. Public Safety Building Committee is having their first meeting since special town meeting on September twenty-third. The, I got riveting training by Mass D E P's Public Drinking Water Division on how to do reports for when we own this, own this new public drinking water facility. That is going to be a lot of fun.
Oh, yay.
The Digital Equity Stakeholder Working Group met for the first time on September eleventh. We will be working with the group that M B I contracted with the town up through that grant to do a series of public hearings on what the town needs in terms of internet speed or there's a variety of things that count as digital equity. None of them are as, certain people pointed out, the word equity doesn't really go as far to describe what we're doing here, but when you're thinking of equity between a rural community and a Boston-type community, there is a certain level of equitability in there, so, so I look forward to that. We've been holding weekly meetings with Alec Wade, our part-time planner. He is already putting together all of the, all of the forms and fees and we're working on, uh, standard operating procedures for the town and on the planning side. I think this is going to be a very positive outcome. I'm also, I've begun working on the forms and processes. I believe too many of our forms are all over the place. So in a step forward towards eventual full E permitting, we should at least have all of our forms in one place so that they can be easily located by the community. As I was talking about with Patricia this morning, I don't think it was necessarily any, any individual that put the forms all over the place, I just think they, they find their way in and then over a couple of years, end up where they're gonna be. The regional trash request for proposal will likely be going out at the end of October. I've been working with Irene and the town administrators in Princeton and Rutland on that. We had a department and staff meeting. These are part of the monthly program that we've been doing. I do department heads on the last Wednesday and then our administrative and finance staff two weeks later. So we, I meet with departments and staff members every two weeks to just make sure that everyone knows what is going on, everyone feels valued and heard, and that is the point of those. Peter was here waiting for the digital equity meeting, so he sat in on our.
That was an hour early for the meeting, so.
Our administrative and finance one. We have ongoing training in the next couple of weeks for Laserfish and Open Gov, our E licensure platform. I was very honest with them that we could be interested in more over time, over a longer timeline, but if it continued in the fashion that it was going right now, we would certainly be utilizing another vendor. So they have scheduled training for us to work on workflows and the way that it can work to ensure that the residents filling out forms can have an easy time doing that. The contracts for the boiler upgrade and the phone upgrade have been finalized. The boiler will start any, sometime in the spring. And the phones should be, I think Verizon wireless needs forty-five days. I'm going to be presenting a proposal to the Public Safety Building Committee on the twenty-third to, in hopes of working with a specialized grant company to put together a grant plan. Should the Public Safety Building Committee be interested in this, I will bring it forward at your next meeting.
What time, what time does this start?
Six. Public Safety?
I don't recall what the latest was for the time.
Six, yeah.
You're gonna have a zoom in op or a Google in option?
Yep.
Okay. You can tune in for fifteen minutes.
Been attending riveting training on brick grants, federal grants. I'm hoping that this can really come to fruition. If not, it's not the most fun thing in the land. And then I, we start my H R seminar on Friday. It's five weeks and it covers topics like onboarding, benefit management, collective bargaining, labor laws, and employee wellness through practical exercises. Can answer questions on any of those or if you have any other topics, but that is my report for this week.
I have questions on grants.
Quick.
I know we don't own forty-eight Gardner Road yet, but when we do, is there anything in the works for grants for an elevator?
That.
Yet, we haven't done anything yet, or?
In the works, well, must, what is in the works for the elevator is the fact that we applied with C M R P C, who isn't our plant, our regional planning agent, to work on an A D A plan that would then help us apply for things like lifts. I looked at the prices of used lifts, they're not awful, but they're also not cheap, so.
And.
But you need the A D A plan to apply for the A D A grant.
I understand.
Make it more competitive.
Yeah.
And we are fortunate that we didn't go with the A D A plan in the past. Then we would own a building that's not in our A D A plan.
How long?
Is there any, um?
I would have anticipated hearing by now, but sometimes they take a little longer than due, but I also didn't hear no, so.
Is there any capital improvement money out there for stuff like that?
The next round of A D A grants. So there's two A D A grants, there's one that's a transitional plan and one that's a project. Nate had already applied for the transitional plan, that's what C M R P C is gonna have to do. By including a building in a project within the transitional plan, it makes it a more competitive application when we apply next round around like March or May and changing the deadlines.
Thank you.
And those are what would be outlined in the potential grant plan that I would be looking to work with a company called Capital Solutions on.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably phase two also. Am I correct in that? Because we probably wouldn't be using the second floor. You can't really use the second floor if it's not accessible by a handicapped person.
And then in sort of the same.
For the public, yeah.
For the public.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't put officers up there.
Well, you, yeah, you'd need a plan on, in, in order to do that main building permanently, you're, we're gonna need a plan of how to do it, like, cause things are gonna have to come out.
Correct.
You know, walls may move.
Correct.
Things like that, and you can't really do that with tenants downstairs, and you need a whole plan.
And then I spoke to, kind of in the same vein, kind of different, I spoke with the money tech teacher. He's gonna come down after we own it and look at some stuff and see what's going on. They have, they're transitioning a, a empty warehouse and do some more like labor space for them?
I think it's open.
It's open, yeah, they announced that it's open. It's the old Watch Uzit, um, canning location.
Yeah, they just.
And distribution, um, Watch Uzit sold it when they were sold and my tech took it over and turned it into, um, a shop space.
They don't think they're done. He told me that the people were booked out through the fall doing that project and he could talk different projects in the spring and looks forward to partnering.
So it means our monitific fees going up if they just bought a building.
Only if our people grow up.
Okay.
And that's all I have for now.
Okay. All right. Um, we're referring to policies to review before we look at them specifically, just to point out of the, the items A, C, and D, basically Nate's just looking to, for authorization to create a draft version of each of those so that they, they can bring it to us for finalization. And items B and E, he's just, again, he's just asking to be, to review, to market as having been reviewed with updates, et cetera. That will be specified, so under conduct and discipline policy, Nate had indicated to me that it's basically only very small edits that need to be done, nothing much on that. Do you have anything else you wanna add on that?
So my suggestion for conduct and discipline policy was suggested changes include adding language regarding responsible use of social media and behavior outside of work. This is to ensure the town's reputation is protected.
Okay.
What, can't go wild on social media?
Nope.
Especially the town page.
Yep.
Any additions to that?
No, not on that one, no.
Okay.
Nope, that's all I'm looking for, is is that something or any other amendments to this policy that we would like to see? If we don't wanna see any amend, any amendments and this is good by the select board, we can mark it as reviewed with the changes that are in all of the policies.
Oh, you talked about the discipline policy to be marked as rev, as reviewed?
Yeah, like if we don't, if the board does not have it in their appetite to review a change, and I looked at it pretty extensively and do believe that one of the only changes that would be reasonable would be updating it to have social media in it. But other than that, if it was marked as reviewed, it wouldn't be hurting anyone.
All right, then if there's nothing else for that, we can have a, a motion to, uh, move to mark the town administrators, yeah, to mark, uh, the conduct and discipline policy as reviewed with updates, changes and all instances, uh, to be finalized at our next meeting, or?
Well, no, we wanna add the social media stuff.
Oh, well, we.
To mark as reviewed as amended.
As reviewed, as amended, okay, yeah.
If you mark it as reviewed right now, the way I've been doing it is, it, it's done.
Yeah.
And if you tell me yes, go back to, to put it together and bring us a amended policy because we would like to see that, or we would like to see this other idea, I will go do that.
All right.
So.
So we wanna have him review it and fix it. So do you actually need that as a, as a motion now?
So we all need a motion now?
I'll bring, I'll bring you back something for conduct.
Bring it back.
Okay, so, fine. Uh, item B, equal opportunity, e- equal employment opportunity policy. Again, he simply wants it to be, to mark the equal opportunity policy as reviewed with updates to change all instances of the board of selectmen to select board and chairman to chair. Anything else, yes?
Nope, so there was nothing else, right?
That's nothing, so we'll just, we'll mark that review.
Sec, well, I got discussions. I just got a quick question. Who's our appointed sexual harassment officers?
Me?
Don't be Nate.
Yeah.
Right now.
These appointed officers, male and female?
Yeah, and, and.
Will be identified annually.
Mary.
It was Bobby, it's like, yeah, it's Mary now.
No, it's Mary, I thought it was Mary.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's all I had. And then you, I'm assuming you reviewed in the policy section to make sure that that list is comprehensive of the most modern lists that exist.
Okay.
Yes and no.
Are all your department heads?
Are all your department heads aware of who's the sexual harassment officers for this town?
That is, no, but that's something we are going to make them aware of. That's one of the points. Technically, they sign a document say, stating that they read this, but we will ensure that this is, cause what I'm doing is after all of these are reviewed by the board, I'm sending them back out and then have a plan at the end of the whole review to put them all together, just mark as reviewed in twenty twenty-four.
And do you and Mary get training on this? Sexual harassment and stuff?
I have not been sexually harassment trained in.
Okay. Thought you were going somewhere else on that, sorry.
In a, in a formal atmosphere.
You, whoever is going to take those leads should have some formal training. So I would recommend that that gets done ASAP, cause if something were to go haywire, we need to make sure everyone knows exactly what they're supposed to be doing and how it's supposed to go, so that way it, yeah.
Absolutely.
And CAD offers training as a regular basis, usually, again, not to, not to, yeah.
Maya.
I always promote Maya. Maya does them free on a regular basis, including conducting investigations and.
Do you want the payroll, no?
I'm not, but I told them the other day that I should be getting, you know, some kind of incentive here.
Yeah.
So they handed me a book and said, here you go, and I was like, thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, freebie, thank you.
All right, so where are we now on this, um?
We need a second.
I'm.
A second, okay, thank you.
So the motion is understood, okay?
Yes.
Yep.
And it has been seconded?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're done with that one.
Okay?
Okay, we're good.
So if any.
Any further questions, if not, uh, all in favor of the motion for item B? All in favor?
Ayes.
Aye?
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried?
If anything was controversial, it's the next one.
Yep, drug and alcohol, drug and workplace policy.
Not even work.
Again, he's looking to, uh, have it authorize him to create a draft version of the updated drug and alcohol free workplace policy for finalization at our next meeting.
Because people don't like weed.
I'm sorry, what's the question, Steve?
And technically, someone that was, were to work in a not DPW or police could partake in something.
Yeah, but not at the workplace.
No, not at work, no, no, absolutely.
Well, that's what I'm saying, how, how is this controversial?
Not on them either. If you have a deal, if you have a CDL.
Yeah.
You can't go home and smoke a bone after work.
But I'm just saying, you can't, this is at the workplace.
Until they change the federal law, which they're talking about.
I'm just saying, this is at the workplace, no offense. If I walked in and somebody was like smoking weed, I'd lose my mind and be like, what are you doing?
Yeah, but this, so I almost wonder.
Regardless, if it's legal, not legal, or anything, can't do that at work.
So page two, they talk about off duty and on duty, right? Which is usually you often see for like police officers, it's a common one. But the off duty one, any use, sale, possession, distribution, dispense, dispensation, manufacture, or transfer of controlled substances or marijuana, except in the case of marijuana, we're authorized by Massachusetts law. But regardless, we don't usually get into, I mean, in, okay. Unless there's a criminal proceeding or something, you know, you do what you do.
My proposed change that I would likely come back with, as outlined in my draft, was replace section four subsection A three with the following. Marijuana use is illegal in Massachusetts, however, employees in positions that require drug testing must adhere to both state and federal regulations where marijuana use remains prohibited. Any off duty use of marijuana, controlled substances, or alcohol that impairs an employee's ability to perform their job adversely, impacts safety, or affects the town's reputation is prohibited. Employees must maintain job performance and safety standards at all time, regardless of the legality of marijuana or alcohol use off duty.
So the other thing I would say is some towns, police off, police chiefs are very adamant that it's against federal law, so therefore it's prohibited in their department. The second piece is, we just need to be careful with any policy that's going to impact a union that we're supposed to at least have a conversation with the union. Now, if this is already in place in twenty twenty, assuming we already did that, we're just doing an update, so it's not as.
Or we can mark as reviewed, like, none of these are substantial, like, life or death of policy moves.
And have we sent this policy in particular to police chief, fire chief, DPW director for any input that?
Only as a, as a whole, and they were on this a few weeks ago. Now that you said that, that absolutely is something I'm gonna do from now on. We're gonna send it to the department heads tomorrow, or a week and a half ahead of each meeting.
Well, just cause sometimes they might know something that we're not thinking of that's gonna impact them, especially with the unions.
So what would you like to do then on item C?
Authorize the town administrator to work with department heads to determine if there are any applicable changes to the town's.
I don't even think we need to do that, Nate, I think we just say, bring it back when it's ready, bring it back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll go look at it.
We okay with that, bring it back when it's ready?
So we don't need a motion?
No.
Okay.
Bring it back when it's ready, Nate, Lee.
Yep, got it.
All right, so we'll move on then. Conflict of interest policy. He's looking to authorize the town administrator to create a draft version of the updated conflict of interest policy for finalization at the next meeting. Any discussion on this one?
Yes, yes, please. Um, so is, in what way is this policy differential or differentiated from MGL?
Minimally, almost not at all.
Oh, okay, follow up question, why do we have this policy? So as a, as an employee, right, or as one of us, when you get the position, you have to go sign the thing that says, I've done the conflict of interest training, you have to do the conflict of interest training, you have to hand it in, this isn't even something like, I agree that there's an MGL out there, like, you legit have to take the training.
So the, the only parts of this that I was proposing any changes was adding the phone number for the ethics commission's attorney of the day, adding changes that indicate that you do have to put in a financial interest disclosure, and ratifying the section subsection, section I subsection F when it comes to multiple job exemptions, because we weren't following the rules on that. And there are several individuals in the community with multiple jobs that should be covering their rears and kind of filling out the proper paperwork.
Covering their ethics.
Yeah.
But I guess to my point, right, so this, to me, this would confuse people. I would be concerned that this would confuse people, because I wouldn't know if I'm following this policy or the state policy.
The state.
And then I'd wanna know what the difference is, and if there's no difference, then I don't understand why we have the secondary policy.
Is everything you've just said you want to add to this covered in the state?
Everything that I, everything that I am proposing is covered in the Massachusetts general law that governs ethics and conflict of interest.
And I would agree with Heather, we scrap it and go with the state.
What if you just have a cheat sheet from police?
Good.
That's not a policy, that just says, here's the MGL, we can find it, here's the top five things that we see people don't understand, and here's the phone number for the attorney of the day, and here's the link to the forms.
There's just so many people, and I agree with you, I'm kind of seconding what you're saying. There's so many people that don't know that there is a phone number for them to call and get.
That's a question, yeah.
Well, this is all covered under ethics, is it not?
Yeah.
The state ethics?
Yep.
That we have, the test we have to take?
Yeah, that thing that you gotta take online.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's almost word for word, is it not? Yeah, nah.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Cause that's where I got the wording.
But yeah, you can call that phone number, you can ask questions, to make sure you're not.
And you don't have to tell them who you are, you can ask very broad questions.
Yeah. Yeah. You can ask more specific questions.
So is the feeling that just to scrap it?
I, I like Heather's idea of the cheat sheet and.
Which I don't think you need a vote from the select board on, you just.
Well, I can create a cheat sheet and put it on that board.
Yeah.
So we're all in agreement on that?
So we maintain an ethics policy?
We don't, I don't think we need an ethic.
We don't, because.
Do you want a motion to ex-nay?
If that is your will.
Yeah, it, it only affects, affects the employees and the select board and committee members and stuff like that, anyways.
But already impacts, this is just redundant and confusing, cause you don't know what you're following.
Yeah.
Yeah, no motions needed, so what?
There's gotta be, there's gotta be, you know, we can't just scrap it entirely. We've gotta say that to refer to the state's ethics policy. Our policy is to refer to the state's ethics policy.
Signing a state ethics policy, it's master law, people already signed it.
Our policy is to refer to the master general law.
I don't even think we have to have a policy that says you refer to the master law, cause the master law would trump our policy anyway.
You can't work here without following the guidance of that law.
You have to, that's a certificate you have to take every couple of years. Everyone has to do it.
Oh, yeah.
They don't have a tracking piece for it. Does that mean you're behind?
No.
But that, that's what I'm saying, like, it's.
It's redundant.
So can we move on?
Yes.
All right.
Is there a motion to scrap?
We don't need a motion?
Yeah.
Wow.
You would one hundred percent need a motion to scrap it.
For scrap.
Scrap it.
Oh, okay, well, I, I.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we scrap the conflict of interest policy and refer all back to the master laws, chapter two sixty-eight A.
And by scrap, she means rescind?
Okay.
I'd like to modify that to rescind, still second.
Second.
But I, I would keep a copy with it, rescind it on what date somewhere.
Yes.
Just in case.
Just in case.
All right, well, uh, I'll be at the discussion, motion made in second, now you've made.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I would make sure we have a copy on hand or, or somewhere that, you know, dated rescind and, uh, in case you need to refer back to it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other discussion on that? Okay, then could we?
Do we wanna check with legal counsel, or are we comfortable enough here?
No.
All right. Cause I think what happens here is a, a number of TAs over the course of the last decade have create, almost created a packet of policies and bylaws, the Collins Center is part of it too, that they're standing in front of all of the select boards.
Yeah, and sometimes if there's a mass law, why try to reinvent the wheel, it's the same damn thing, just.
I do get it.
Well, you gotta justify your job, right? So you make work.
Okay, any other discussion?
Rescinded, scrap.
All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried, finally, the anti-fri policy. He basically would like to mark it as reviewed with updates to changes as indicated every, in, every instance of board of selectmen to select board and chairman to the word chair. Anything else, any on that one?
Couple of questions. So page three, uh, section eight, internal controls. We use the word auditor here, are we referencing auditor, or is this a document that started in a city and we really mean accountant?
I'd go with the latter.
Okay, so if we can change that up, uh, second paragraph, um, unless you got a promotion to a manger instead of administrator, maybe we could change town manger to the administrative.
That's a good one, come on. Uh. What if I wanna be a town manger?
Yeah, I'll give this to you afterwards, Tricia, so you have it.
Thank you.
Well, Nate always outgives.
Section nine, general policies, procedure, same thing, just change auditor to accountant. Um, last paragraph, I think it just should be probably a shall. Upon conclusion of the investigation, the results will be reported to the town administrator, his or her designee. If there are any reasonable, if there are reasonable grounds to believe that fraud may have occurred, the town administrator currently says may report the incident to the appropriate authorities. I think it should say shall report.
Yeah.
Make it less so that someone has to be sitting there going whether or not they do it, it just tells them what to do.
Yeah, cause a TA could be on the tape too.
That's enough changes that I would like to bring it back. Like, I will edit those and we can laugh at manger again.
And then you can put in the.
Yeah, and then we'll, and then we'll put it better.
All right, then we'll hold on any motion on that one, okay?
All right, I'll, I'll come back with that, huh?
So, can I, can I just make a recommendation or see if the board's interested in this? Moving forward, Nate, since, you know, I think you put a lot of time and energy into looking at these and reviewing these, instead of us playing back and forth, does it make sense for you to take the policy? If you think there's recommended, recommended changes, you just make the changes and attract changes for a mode, send it to us, and if we accept it as a whole, it becomes amended and we're done?
That's what I have, but I'm, I'm doing this to put space, because if you notice, I, a lot of times I'm saying, propose, propose, suggestions, like, I can do that too, but I don't want anyone on the board to think I am going above and beyond and saying that it is not an open conversation, cause it is. And maybe I miss a section of something, or it doesn't necessarily hit for me, but then when someone else looks at it, they have it, they have a different preference or a different review of it. So that was my only, not to say that we couldn't do that anyway.
I guess where I'm coming from, I know it's, I know it's a substantial amount of work for you to take a look at all of these pieces, and it's even harder to keep notes separate than the actual documents. And I think instead of spending time, both of your time and the board's time, you're a professional town administrator, right? We have you to advise us, and if you advise us and say, here's the twenty changes, I know one thing, you know, Peter disagrees, he's gonna tell you he disagrees, K P, me, Katie Jeff, like, I don't think with the current board compilation that we're gonna have any issue saying, Nate, we don't like this at all.
No, I don't.
Or we love this, right?
So I will, from here on out, go to the department heads two weeks out, then come, come back with a, with any proposed changes drafted up, and we can have those conversations so that we don't end up with a laundry list of tabled items.
Yeah, and maybe just show what, anything that you changed in a different color or something, just so we know where the changes were.
Sounds good. Anything else in terms of that? Okay, uh, then moving on, uh, Matt is not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I have any, yes?
I just have one quick follow-up, and it's always possible that I missed this at some point, the dot gov domain.
Yep.
Do we have an update on that? Did we give an update and I missed it?
I gave an update last time, all of our emails have dot gov aliases right now.
Okay. Well, we're approved for the dot gov domain?
Yeah, we were, we were approved two months ago.
Okay.
And now I'm meeting with CEM geeks next week to talk servers at forty-eight Garner Road, dot gov, and end of life for Windows ten.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, anything else?
Yes, I got something. Yeah, me too, I always got something.
Okay.
No, Chris.
Yeah, Chris. Um, okay, thank you, um, the woman that was here at the other meeting from the emergency management, was that Kathy?
Judy?
Judy.
Judy. Um, she caught up with me up at Field Day, their emergency response trailer. Um, she wants to do some, some work in there, I don't know if you guys have ever seen it, but it's, you know, it's got like shoveling and whatnot. She wants to add some cabinetry there. She was asking me if I knew of anybody who could volunteer time for the town to install some additional cabinets there. I didn't, so I'm putting it out here in this public forum. Um, she says she's got some money in her account to fund the project, she's just looking for someone who can actually do the work. So if anybody out there is listening or watching, or knows somebody who can do that, would like to volunteer some time to the town.
Could we put on the whips, or would that be considered advertising?
That would be greatly appreciated.
Is that a fine, fine line?
I feel that that's a fine line.
All right, then, forgot what, for putting a volunteer, putting it on.
Thank you.
Bring that kinda thing, cause it's, well, because it's.
Well, we have, we have senior work off and stuff, right? Who knows, maybe someone there knows somebody who can do that and wants a little tax break or something.
I wish we had a very handy, handy senior work off, that would be tremendous.
We could always reach out to Monty Tech and see if that's something, you know, if you're talking cabinetry, right?
They already have the cabinets, do you know?
She does not have the cabinets, but she has funding to purchase cabinets.
Oh, okay, so.
She's just looking for installation or.
That'd be a good job for Monty Tech.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep in mind it's in a trailer, so that's.
No, it's a small trailer too, it's, looks like a, like a twelve, eighteen, twelve.
Yeah, but it has.
Is there any way we can get back to her with that kind of information, to?
Yeah.
I can, I gotta, I have to.
Looking to Monty Tech or whatever?
I have to call her anyways for some, some other things, I can.
Okay, and, and Chris brought this up, and this is what came along.
Yep, I will get back to her.
Cause they could probably make the cabinets and everything, right?
Yeah.
Just gotta buy in on the, stick on.
Yeah, especially if it's not gonna cost them. Anything else under, oh, you did, Peter?
Yeah, as I was walking in building here today, I noticed that the clock isn't working.
It's stopped?
On the, on the, on that side, yes, at least that side, cause I can only see two sides when I walk in here. The north facing side is accurate and looks to be keeping the right time. But I guess that would be the east facing side is telling a totally different time for some other country in the world.
I do bring it up every time I see him, so he's aware that we're keeping an eye on the clock.
Yes. Very good, thank you.
I'm good, I'm not gonna bring anything up, I'm good.
Sure?
Yeah, I've already brought it up before, but I'll bring it up again every time's appropriate.
It's wicked wheel gets the grease.
Okay.
Gotta keep bringing it up.
Alright, alright, let's go, I'll keep going. So, I did, did I bring up AEDs at the last board meeting?
Brought up AEDs when you attended the.
Okay, so, I think it's important that this building should have an AED in it.
It does, the seniors have.
Yeah, but there's not one over here. But, we're not gonna be at the seniors, we're not gonna be here forever, right, so I'm, I'm trying to think forward, um.
Mm-hmm.
Make sure that building has some.
I know the DPWs has one, I think.
DPW has one, um, the police department has one.
Obviously, the fries, they, they all do.
Um, the library is getting one from the board of health.
Alright, and I know there's probably grants out there.
In the seniors.
And there's grants out there.
And I also recommended the other day that I think staff should have available to them the ability to train in CPR first aid.
Yes, I've already set it up with Taylor.
Thank you.
So we're gonna have class of eight.
Just to let you know if anybody's interested.
So class of eight for her actual certification, she can't go more than eight, um, so what we'll do is we'll have certain members certified, and town employees certified for the eight people training, and then she does one big group training where everybody learns how to actually use the items, but they're not officially certified. If we have more than eight certified, then what we'll do is we'll do a separate training at a different day, but the most important thing I think going forward is getting town employees certified in CPR, EpiPen, and the defibrillators.
Correct.
And then do one big training with words and committee members, God forbid something should happen at a board of committee ma- meeting, they know how to administer first aid and CPR.
Well, that's the purpose, that's why I brought all this up, so.
Yep.
Uh, I'm not getting any younger, and it'll be Jeff's, definitely not getting younger.
Wow, just whip him under the bus, jeez.
Uh. Well, I mean, some of it, not only for the employees, but we have a lot of elderly people coming to pay their bills and stuff like that, so.
Meeting and duty.
Yep, I figured.
It's a time Katie comes here, and there's an ambulance that comes here shortly after.
I know, it's a, it's a, I'm certified, you know.
So you jumped right on my.
I jumped right on your advice, it's hard to tailor, we sat down and got.
I, I just think it's, and, and, and another thing I brought up is, it not only helps you work, but it's more important for when you're at home. Okay, and that's what, it's not everybody has an AED, but, you know, CPR sometimes will keep you alive till AED gets there. Well, AED can't.
Or at least somebody that's trained to, that knows a little bit better with what's really going on, you know?
Right. Yeah, that's all.
Just trying to help keep somebody alive.
It's just, you know, it could be out, you know, watching the canoes going around the water down there, if somebody needs help, you know, or even on the end of it. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't look great.
Anything else? Public press, anybody have, Mike?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, yes, sir, um, thank you, Mister Chair, Mike Stoff, I'm on my road, received a notification today regarding our assessments, reevaluation, and it says the public disclosure period runs from September sixteenth to September twenty second.
Hmm. Hmm.
During this time, residents can review updated property values on the assessor's webpage under FY twenty twenty five proposed REPP values.
Excuse me.
So does that mean after the twenty second, we can't review it?
No. No, they're already up, well, after the twenty second, they will be moving forward and setting the tax rate.
Okay, okay.
So if there was a time period to have an opinion on it, and it's actually the twenty third.
Okay.
It's not nice, I'll tell you that.
It, it says that we can review it during that time, but we can continue to review it, it's not gonna be taken down off the website.
Only one of forty, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the clarification I was looking for, thank you, Mister Chair.
And just for the group, I guess, 'cause this is tied in, we lost an employee today, it was a part-time employee, it's just, I think, between school and work and everything, so I took on her email so that we don't drop any constituent services and that we can hold the appropriate feet to the fire when it is time to respond. I am hoping to get it posted tomorrow, I really don't think it's gonna be a, a popular post or a popular job to apply for. I've also spoken with a couple of other TAs, and because the vendor that we use has a very polarizing r- relationship with many of the municipal professionals in the region, many either want to work with them or do not want to work with them at all, so it's been interesting.
Fine line, it's tough to fill.
But we're working on it. Yeah, and I put, I put my own and Rob Ekman's, uh, emails all over the website, all over the doors, just something I was trying to get them to do before, but I've done that.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, alright, could we have a motion to adjourn?
Some more. Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Good work tonight, everybody.
If you have two things.
Alright, you have signings for you to sign.
Yeah, right.